So we need to do a quick roll call since we have one of our members on Zoom. So Anne Marie.
Foley here.
All right, it's Ray.
Mead.
Hallamo here.
Jefferson here.
All right, we are in session. So first up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Your Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, just a couple of quick announcements. Grafton celebrates the holidays will be held on Sunday, December 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This event will include a craft fair here at the municipal center, Frosty Stops at Local Businesses, a visit from Santa, and the ceremonial lighting of the comet. On Wednesday, January 24th, the Economic Development Commission will host a networking event for business owners at the Post Office Pub from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We would like to take a moment to thank Representative Dave Meridian for his $7,500 donation to the Grafton Senior Center and recognize Dr. Tina Thoreau for her many years of generous donations as well. We greatly appreciate these contributions to help our community's seniors. So next up, we have the Tax Classification Hearing. Come on up.
So I'll read the legal notice.
Thanks.
Are you guys can hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Can you see me?
Nope.
No.
Okay, sorry about that, I'll work on it. The Grafton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the question of the adoption of the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for the fiscal, for the next fiscal year in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 56 of the General Laws. The meeting will be held in Conference Room A of the municipal center, Grafton Municipal Center at 30 Providence Road. Remote participation will be available and the link will be posted on the November 21st Select Board Agenda. At such meeting, sorry, at such hearing, the Board of Assessors will provide all of the information and data relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. The Commissioner of Revenue will not approve the tax rate of a town until the Select Board has held such a public hearing and until the town has adopted the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. If you have a question to ask or a comment to offer but cannot participate in the public hearing, you may submit the same by emailing ta@graftondotma.gov, by written letter sent via USPS, or by hand delivery to the Town Administrator's Office, Grafton Municipal Center, 30 Providence Road. All must be received by November 15th, 2023. And the motion for consideration is I move the board vote to open the public hearing.
Second. I have motion and a second. All those by roll call. Anne Marie.
Fully aye.
Mead aye.
Hallamo aye.
Hafden aye.
Jefferson aye.
The motion carries. All right, we are open.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Kallenowski, I'm the Principal Assessor for the town of Grafton. I'm here today with my board member, Alaki Muzamba, and my assistant, Megan Lavoy. The purpose of the, you can do the next slide, Evan.
I got you.
The purpose of the classification hearing is to provide information to the Select Board in order for them to make policy decisions in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 40, Section 56 of Mass General Laws as amended by Chapter 200 of the Acts of 1988. Every year at a public hearing, the Select Board through the recommendation of the Board of Assessors is empowered to determine the allocation of local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and personal property for the upcoming fiscal year. In the past, the Select Board has chosen to have a single rate, however, they are legally justified in deciding to split the rate in order to reduce the residential taxes or to manage the levy split. The public classification hearing allows for the Select Board to hear from all taxpayers in town before exercising their judgment to find the most appropriate distribution of the property tax burden. Okay, so the, the four, oh, can you go back one?
Sorry.
Sorry. So the classification hearing consists of four votes to be taken by the Select Board: the selection of the residential factor, the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, and the open space discount. This slide shows just general information, our assessment dates, the assessment date for new construction, the dates in which we had all of our approvals from the Department of Revenue, and it also shows when our next full revaluation is, which is next fiscal These are our historical assessed values over the past five years, and you can see that there is an increase in the amount of $547,718,929 from fiscal '23 to '24. These assessed values are based on sales that have taken place between January 1 of 2021 and December 31 of 2022. This, this chart shows just how much the values have changed. You can see our single-family homes have increased significantly over the past year, whereas your condos, two families, three families, and apartments have not increased as much. This slide shows the commercial, industrial, and the personal property values over our five-year period. As you can see, we had good growth for the commercial and personal property. The industrial values would have increased, however, we were alerted to an issue with our solar values through some appellate tax board filings in fiscal year 2021 and '22. We also had some abatements for those solar in 2023. I settled all of the ATB cases, and we have adjusted all of the FY24 values for the solar moving forward. So we had to abate a little over $10 million in value, so we had a net loss of about $1.9 million on the industrial. So this slide explains what new, what new growth is. So new growth is subject to taxation for the first time. That would be new articles of personal property, previously exempted property that's now taxable, separate parcels for the fiscal year, subdivisions, condo conversions, any new construction activity. The revaluation program and market adjustments and any addition in value due to upkeep and maintenance is not considered new growth. This shows what our new growth was this year. We had new growth in the amount of $58,866,863, which translates into tax revenue in the amount of $923,857. These are some important terms that you're going to see in the next slide and their definitions. So this is our tax levy comparison over the past five years. This goes through what our base was plus the prop two and a half, any amended growth, any new growth, any override that has been passed that is now a permanent part of that levy, what the levy limit is, any debt exclusion, our stabilization override votes that are also subject to prop two and a half, what the maximum allowable levy is, what our actual levy is, and what the excess capacity is. This slide shows a breakdown of each group, and as you can see, the base plus two and a half percent has increased. The excess levy capacity gets littler every year, but that basically just shows every little group broken up for you. These are historical tax rates. Go to the next slide. That's okay.
Looking at the eighties.
So this, this is how we determine our tax rate. We take what the total actual levy is divided by the value of the town to come to that $14.31 per $1,000 of value. And again, this slide shows what the increase from the prior fiscal year and the overall value for the town was, and it also shows that we decreased by four parcels. So the average single-family value for fiscal '23 was $507,939. Times the tax rate would get you an average single-family tax bill of $7,980 for the fiscal year. Fiscal '24's average single-family value is now $596,235. Times the tax rate that's being proposed would get you a bill, a single-family average tax bill of $8,532. That's an increase of $552 from fiscal '23. This just shows over the last 10 years how much the average single-family value has increased, and also that average tax bill. As you can see, over the last three to four years, that value has increased significantly. So here's where we get to the fun stuff. So we are here to determine the residential factor. So a factor of one is a selection of a single tax rate means that all four property classes will pay the same tax rate. This is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors. A factor of less than one, the law allows this option to shift the tax burden among the classes, reducing the share of tax levy paid by the residential property owners in shifting or increasing those taxes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers through the adoption of the residential factor of less than one. A factor of greater than one conversely will, if it were to be adopted, would have the opposite effect, reducing the share of the tax levy paid by the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers in shifting or increasing those taxes to the residential property owners. So this shows what would happen if we were to split the tax rate. That first line shows what the average single-family bill is and also what the average commercial bill is. So that second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth line is going to show you if you choose to split the tax rate, what will happen. You're going to see the residential tax bill go down slightly, but that commercial tax bill is going to go up significantly. And this is just a, shows exactly what it would do, where the single-family bill kind of stays even, goes down just slightly, and then that commercial tax rate goes up. So residential exemption is another vote that we need to take. By statute, the Select Board can grant an exemption up to 35% of the average assessed value of the residential properties used as the principal residence of the owner. Adopting a residential exemption increases the residential tax as the residential share of the levy must be met. This higher rate creates a shift within the class that reduces the taxes paid by the homeowners with moderately valued properties. Those taxes are then paid by the owner of rental properties, vacation homes, and higher valued homes. There are 18 communities that have adopted this exemption. Grafton is not one of those communities. But you can see, taking a look at the communities, that these are communities that have significant rental or vacation homes, Cape houses, college towns. Adopting the small commercial exemptions shifts the tax burden up to 10% from the eligible commercial parcels to non-eligible commercial parcels and industrial parcels. Commercial parcels must be valued at not more than $1 million and have 10 or fewer full-time employees at all locations. If adopted, this exemption would shift the tax burden from the commercial parcels occupied by small businesses to parcels occupied by larger commercial and industrial businesses. There are 14 communities that have adopted this exemption. Grafton has not adopted this exemption in the past. And this is mainly done in communities with high commercial-industrial base. It shifts the burden from the mom-and-pop stores to the larger commercial and industrial The open space exemption allows cities and towns to tax open space properties at a rate discounted up to 25% from the uniform tax rate. This exemption has no impact on the overall tax levy of the town or the total levy assigned to the residential properties. This exemption has no impact on commercial, industrial, and personal property taxation. The taxed dollars lost by this discount are shifted to the residential class of the properties, which includes developable vacant land. The open space exemption should not be confused with Community Preservation Act, Chapter Land, or any town-owned open space parcels. So it is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors that the Select Board vote on a residential factor of one for the fiscal year, which will continue our historical single tax rate. We would also recommend that the board vote no on the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, and the open space discount. The third thing is that the, we would ask that the Select Board vote to authorize the Principal Assessor to electronically sign and submit the fiscal year 2024 LA-5 through the DOR's gateway. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Tammy, just one thing, and you know, people sometimes look at this and they, and they say, you know, we went from 15 to 14. And, and that's all based on valuations.
Correct.
So your taxes don't really go down. Your, your factor goes down, and that's it. But your, but your valuation of your property is up dramatically.
Yes.
And with the way houses are selling in town, and the price of houses that are selling in town, that's going to continue. So next year, we may be at 13, which sounds really good, but.
So right now, we're still seeing that although sales have slowed down, they're still, they're still.
The values they are.
Higher than our current assessed values. I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't see what's going to happen, but just based on what we do see currently with the sales, yeah, I, I don't foresee them going down. However, if, if we did have values that went down, that tax rate's going to come up because we still have to meet the amount of money that the town needs to function.
Right. I know some people have asked, have mentioned to me that, oh, well, geez, you know, I dropped a dollar, I dropped a buck, so our taxes have gone down. No, no, no.
Yeah, it's.
Not how it works.
No, we, you know, we tell, we tell people when they come into our office, you know, because people aren't happy when they, when they see the increase.
You're kidding.
And rightfully so.
People are not happy.
But we, as the assessors, we don't have any control over the tax rate or the values. You know, the values are what they are based on sales, and the tax rate is, is a formula. We take the actual levy divided by the value of the town as a whole, and we get a number. So.
Mr. Chair, if I might just to.
Of course. Anne Marie.
Hop on for Ray. I mean, Tammy, thank you for including, there was a slide that for taxpayers, it kind of gives you the information, so for an average house now at $596,235, your taxes will increase by, what, $552 next year? So just for folks to raise point, to give them a benchmark for next year.
Save your shekels, right? Tammy, as always, fantastic job of you and the, and the board, just a great job, and I know I sent you an email on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Excellent presentation, a great job.
The, I'm going to try and, I was telling Evan, I'm going to try and feature a new home every year. That is a model home for the new development on Institute Road. That's Toadrina. So.
Outstanding. Just a couple of things, Tammy. If I heard it right, looking at the numbers in your presentation, it looks like the overall value in Grafton has gone up by $500 million? Is that right?
I think it was $547 million.
Yeah, $547 million. And the lion's share of that is.
Residential.
Is in residential. So if people are wondering why their tax bills are going up, even though the tax rate is going down, it's because it's assessed on every $1,000.
Correct.
So what the effect is that people's, because their home values have increased so much, they're being taxed on those, those increases. So that's where the, the additional taxes come from. But overall, when I looked at the slide that had the home values and the, and the tax rate, the tax rate is pretty steady. It's 5% a year, something like that. So because the adjustment is there for the tax rate, it's, it's not like it's a proportional increase where if you have, you know, an extra 25% value of your home, that you have an extra 25% taxes.
That's correct.
It doesn't work that way.
No.
So just to make an observation there, have you seen any towns adopt a residential tax factor, less than one, to incentivize businesses to, to develop in their towns?
Well, I mean, there are other towns that do, do have a split tax rate, but those are towns that have a high commercial tax base. We just don't have it, and it, that would discourage.
So I'm not proposing that we increase the residential factor. The observation that I made on the slide is a very small adjustment in the residential tax rate makes a big difference.
Yes.
In the commercial tax rate because there's such a small percentage of tax revenue coming from commercial sources. So if we were to make a very small adjustment in residential the other direction, it would presumably make a large difference in terms of commercial in Grafton. I'm, I'm just wondering if that's a reasonable strategy to think about in terms of economic development.
So I have not seen where, where it's done the opposite. You're talking about less, less than the 1%, the second portion of that. I've not seen that. It's not something that I've looked into, though. So it's something I can, I can inquire about and get back to if any other towns do that. I've, I've never heard of that.
Okay. Do you guys understand where I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that something that we want to get some information on, or?
So that would shift the burden to the residential from, from the commercial, is what you're talking about.
Yeah. So I don't know what the numbers would look like necessarily, but.
So it's a resident, it's, it's a factor of greater than one, not, not less than it's reversed. So if it went greater to one, that shifts it from commercial, industrial onto the.
Correct.
Residential. But what you're saying is that, you know, if you moved it point one, the average residential might go up by $50, where the average commercial might go down two grand.
Exactly.
There is a spot in Gateway that has it. We've never run it that way because, I mean, you, you wouldn't normally shift it from the, from the commercial onto the residential.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's just a.
Yeah.
A point of interest, and if we're serious about economic development, you know, you have to look at all the tools.
Yeah.
It's just one.
I mean, I could run it and show you what it could do.
Only if the rest of the board's interested in this.
Well, I, I think, you know, with the, with the development that we've got coming up over the next three or four years, I think we might want to, at that point, look at shifting more to the industrial and giving the small business exemption. You know, because we're going to have possibly, I don't know, I don't even want to say the number, of square foot of, of buildings in the, in Grafton in the next three to four years. So I think at that time, when, when Tammy comes to us at that point, that we might want to look, or you, or you might want to look into what, what, what the difference is. I know that, I saw it, you know, in here, it didn't drop much on the residential side. Went up 1,200 bucks on the, on the commercial side. But that's for a, a small, that's for a small possible property. So I think that's something we may want to look at in the future.
Okay. Doesn't sound like we have strong interests for that, so never mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I just need for you to sign that LA-5 tonight.
Sure, well, before we do that, it is a public hearing, so I just wanted to open the call. If anybody had any comments from the public, now is your opportunity. Nobody on Zoom? Nobody in the room? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have motion and a second. All those in favor by roll call. Ms. Foley.
Foley aye.
Mead aye. Hallamo aye.
Hafden aye.
Jefferson aye.
The motion carries.
So Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
Make a motion recommended by the Board of Assessors. I move the board vote to adopt a residential factor of 1.00, no residential exception, no small commercial exemption, and no open space discount, and authorize the Principal Assessor to electronically sign and submit the fiscal year 2024 LA-5 through DOR gateway.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor by roll call. Anne Marie.
Foley aye.
Mead aye.
Hallamo aye.
Hafden aye.
Jefferson aye.
The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Next up, we are on to appointments, and we have the Trails Committee. Ben Neely, are you? Yeah, there he is. Come on up. Good evening. If you just want to give your name and address?
Yes, Ben Neely, 71 Keith Hill Road.
Outstanding, thank you. Yeah, just a minute or two on, you know, we, we all read, I think, the applications, so.
Sure.
What your interest is and, you know, experience.
Yep, I'm interested in joining the Trails Committee in Grafton. I've, I grew up in Grafton on Keith Hill Road. The Hassanamessit Woods butts my property to the rear. I'm a member of the Grafton Land Trust. I am a steward for the Hassanamessit Trail within, in the Hassanamessit Woods. I've worked with the Conservation Commission to make improvements in the trail, and such as some bridges that go over some wet, muddy spots, makes it a lot easier for the hikers and bicycle riders there. Horses will go around it at the moment. We're looking at improving it to include more permanent bridges, stronger bridges that everyone, including the horses, could use, the horse, the trail riders could use. And I'm interested in assisting the town in, in further in all the properties, the trails in, in, in Grafton.
Fantastic. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks so much, Ben. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, next up, we have Steve Skinner. Is Steve here or on Zoom?
He is on Zoom.
Oh, hi, Steve.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, come on in. Good evening.
Yep. I'm Steve Skinner. I live at 39 Hingham Road, North Grafton. I just saw that, that you were looking for people to volunteer, and I'm recently retired, looking for things to do. And I, one thing I've done over the course of my life is quite a bit of hiking, mountain biking, and, you know, outdoors things in general. So I'm just looking to give back to the community and, you know, help out any way I can, really, you know? And that's about it, yeah.
Great. Well, thanks so much for, for your interest. I appreciate it. Next up, we have Dan Helms.
Dan Helms, 94 North Main Street, North Grafton, Massachusetts. Kind of going back to my roots, going back into Forest Street, recently retired, two years consulting, more in the energy field the last 40 years versus the environmental The resource we have in town is unbelievable in terms of the green areas that Massachusetts, that the town has set aside. Would like to be, you know, help in maintaining them and enhancing them. Conservation Commission, and you guys have done a wonderful job already. I think we can only. I think we can only, uh, can only help to enhance the great resource that we have in this town. I mean, I just think it has a wealth of opportunities across the community, you know, um, especially considering our current situations. Nothing like being outdoors and, and maintaining the, uh, getting a little fresh air, especially for our kids, you know, but, um, so like I said, I was just trying to get back to where I, uh, came from and, um, which was in forestry and resource management recreation. I think you saw my, been all over the place, you know, and, um, just a nice opportunity, I think.
Fantastic. Uh, thanks so much, Dan. Appreciate it. Um, next up, we have Deb, Deb Adams.
So I didn't know I had to talk, but I'm Deb Adams, um, one hundred Brigham Hill Road. Um, grew up in Grafton, and because I'm a horse person, I have a farm, and because of the heavy traffic flow, it is dangerous to be anywhere in the road, walking, hiking, biking, and certainly on horseback. So the trails are very important for all those activities. Um, I myself do ride on Brigham Hill. I do ride on the trails. And respectfully, we do stay off when there's mud, but, um, that's about the only time. So otherwise, I, I'm very interested in maintaining the trails. It'd be nice if we would get some kind of a connector going, so all the trails did connect somehow. That's basically, that's my interest in helping out.
Fantastic. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much, Deb. Uh, next up, we have Carolyn Weeks.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Carolyn Weeks, one-ten Main Street, South Grafton. I am also an equestrian in Grafton. I, my barn is on Keith Hill Road. We ride Hassanamessit Woods almost every day. I'm interested in being on the Trail Committee to help maintain and take great care of our trails. We have a vast trail system in Grafton, north, south, and main Grafton, and I'd like to be part of it.
Fantastic. Any questions? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So, um, we have split the motions up so that we can stagger the, um, terms. And the reason we do that, uh, for the public's interest is so that we don't have a, um, this Trails Committee all, uh, turning over, um, with new membership, um, all at the same time. So, um, there's no, doesn't necessarily need to be any rhyme or reason to how we split them up. So I, with that said, I'll, I'll take a motion if somebody's gonna suffer it.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I can make a motion.
Ms. Foley.
Um, and perhaps if anyone that came in, thank you all for coming in. First of all, uh, hasn't, I'm just gonna go down the line in terms of how the motion
Perfect.
reads.
Yep.
Um, and if someone has an issue with timeframe or what have you, they can chime in. So I move the board vote to appoint Ben Neely and Steve Skinner to the Trails Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-sixth. And I move the board vote to appoint Dan Helms and Deborah Adams to the Trails Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And I move the board vote to appoint Carolyn Weeks to the Trails Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? By our none. All those by roll call. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Hafden, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Uh, question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Foley.
So further, would, would it be appropriate for either someone from the Select Board and/or the Open Space and Trails Committee to go to their first meeting? I know when we created a, a committee I was on, I know that Peter opened it, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Uh.
First meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, first meeting, yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm, hadn't heard of that, actually, but, um, sounds like a good idea.
I just was thinking, you know, and I'm happy to volunteer, obviously, given that I'm on the Open Space and Rec Committee. Um, and just to, you know, give them an introduction and how we got here, or I'm also happy to cede that to someone else on the, the same committee.
Yeah, look, uh, Anne Marie, this has been your baby from kinda day one, um, and you've put all the work into it, so, um, I'm very happy to
Okay.
Yeah, just let you do that. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, all right, great. Uh, we are moving on then. Uh, next up, we have a Planning Board Associate Member. Andrea Breznerham.
Aye.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair.
Do we wanna call the Planning Board meeting to order at this point?
Do you get the order?
Yeah, since it's a joint appointment.
Okay, great. Yeah, um, hang on just one second, Andrea. We're gonna, um, just, uh, bring the Planning Board meeting to order.
Okay, I declare the Planning Board, uh, meeting, uh, in order. Um, we'll check the, uh, the, uh, roll call.
Is Prabhu on the attendees list?
Everyone's here in person except Fiona.
In person.
And can everybody hear all four of us? Anybody who can't hear us, let us know. Okay.
Fantastic. Um, okay, so, um, yeah, uh, Andrea, if you just wanna, uh, give us a quick brief, um, uh, we got your, um, application, um, but if there's anything in addition you'd like to say, come on in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Andrea Breznerham, I live at nine Milbury Street. I, um, would like to join the Planning Committee, and I believe that I am, my interest in, in, I'm civic minded. I have an interest in planning. I am professionally competent. I am free from any conflict of interest, and I have the time available. And I'm, I'm currently on the Master Plan Working Group, and that's been going really well as well.
Great.
So.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that a little bit later on this evening. Um, fantastic. Um, any, any questions? From the, um, Select Board? Planning? No? Okay. If not, I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Andrea Breznerham as the Associate Member of the Planning Board for a two-year term expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the Select Board? All those in favor, Ms. Foley?
Aye. Foley, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Hafden, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
The Select Board, uh, motion carries.
Um, we should take
Does the Planning Board have to vote too?
We do.
Yep.
Um, any, 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 uh, discussion from the Planning Board?
Should we do a separate motion just to make it cleaner or no?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're voting.
Just make it short.
It's a joint, it's a joint meeting. It's a joint motion.
Just make it short, Mr. Chair. I vote aye.
Davidson, aye.
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 All right.
Motion carries for all of us.
Thank you so much, Andrea.
Congratulations.
Um, all right, next up, we have the Local Building Inspector, Tracy Sharkey.
Yep, Tracy is not, uh, here. It's just an information vote.
All right, great. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Tracy Sharkey as the Local Building Inspector for the town of Grafton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor by roll call. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Hafden, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
The motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Uh, next up, we have an Auxiliary, uh, firefighter, um, Ayaz Khan.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Ayaz Khan as an auxiliary firefighter at Station One.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor by roll call. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Hafden, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
The motion carries. Great. Uh, next up, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Board and Affordable Housing to review the housing production plan. So, um, do we have anybody from the trust here?
Bruce is here.
Bruce, do you wanna just, um, do you have a, do you have a quorum?
Um, actually, Evan, if you could check online and see if I, I need to remember.
Mr. Prisby is online.
And we have a quorum. We have a meeting with a relatively brief agenda that pertains to the housing production plan. So I can call us to order, but we get a roll call and all that.
We should be on the microphone.
I can't hear him.
He's gotta be on the mic.
Yeah, so come on up. Bruce, don't be afraid of the mic.
Nah, I'll be okay. I'm gonna sit down. Um, so we have a quorum. I posted an agenda with, uh, or Amber posted an agenda for us um, for, um, brief subject matter just pertaining to the housing production plan. So with, uh, Ed being online, we have a quorum here. So if you want, we can move up here and, um, I can call us to order.
Great.
Perfect. Okay. You gotta come up too. That seems available. Next change. Dan, you gotta move closer to me.
Do I have to?
Yeah, you too. All right, brilliant. So I just, uh, briefly, I'm calling the, um, oop, missed the date. Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
November twenty-first, meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust to order, uh, by roll call, starting with Nicole.
Nicole, aye.
Dan.
Dan, aye.
Ed. Is on mute. Somebody kick Ed? No, I'm here. Bruce is an aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Ah, fair enough. We actually have our Select Board rep here, so
There we go.
we'll wait for Ed to come back in a little bit later, but I'm sure he can catch up, and then, then I'm on the mic, he can, uh, hear everything on the tape.
Sounds good. All right. Um, so the purpose of this agenda item is to, um, discuss and approve the housing production plan. Um, I'd like to just request, um, kindly that we stick to conversation about this particular plan and, um, any questions that you might have about it. Um, and, uh, what I'd like to avoid is a general discussion about development in Grafton. Um, so let's stick to the agenda item and, and the, um, the reason that we're here, um, having this discussion, uh, 'cause obviously there's a lot of participants here. Um, so I wanna make sure that we have a very directed discussion. With that, um, who would like to, um, provide context, um, before we have our discussion?
Fiona, is there any?
How about Fiona?
Fiona, would you like to come on in?
Hello, yes. Hi, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, how's everybody?
We're doing great.
A lot of people in there. Uh, good to see everyone. Thank you so much for, um, for having this, um, joint meeting. We, uh, we appreciate it. It is for, for, um, efficiency sake. It's extremely helpful. Um, for those who, who might not know me, Fiona Cofflin, Town Planner for the town of Grafton. Um, I was the primary staff person, um, assigned to this project. I worked, um, in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Trust, the Planning Board, um, as well as our, our Regional Housing Coordinator, Jeseefah, who was on earlier but had to step away. And of course, Karen Sonnberg, who is our consultant, and she's also on the line. We will take questions later. Um, I was just going to, um, give a very, very brief overview of the purpose of the housing production plan, um, and a little bit of background about this project and how we got to where we are today. And from there, we would probably, uh, turn it over to Karen to take, take any questions about the draft that was uploaded to the Select Board Packet and go over, and then we'll, sorry, we'll have Karen go over, um, the, uh, submission process to this date once, um, if and once approved this evening, um, if that is amenable to, um, you, Mr. Chair, and, and you, Mr. Hassender Chair, and of course Bruce as well.
Works for me. Okay. Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Sure. So, um, just in a nutshell, for those who may not know or are unfamiliar with what a housing production plan is, um, housing production plan is a five-year strategy adopted by communities in Massachusetts, um, that outlines how the community will uh, meet their affordable housing goals. Um, it also is critically important, um, for addressing unmet housing needs for low and moderate income households in, in Grafton. Um, the plan, uh, the plans outline is dictated, um, by state law, and, um, the requirements, uh, with, for the, um, the sections of the plan are all outlined, um, under Mass General Law, Chapter forty B. So each of the sections that you'll see in the draft that's uploaded, um, to the packet, um, is very intentional, and, um, there's specific reasons why we have a, a needs assessment, um, as well as challenges and mitigation measures, um, goals, and then strategies to achieve those goals. Um, as for those who are unfamiliar, um, the certification of a housing production plan through the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities plus meeting a certain production goal, um, will allow the community to have what's called, um, consistency with local needs, and will allow the zoning board of appeals to be able to ex, exercise more discretion over incoming applications, um, for comprehensive permits. Um, AKA our, our safe harbor status. So the housing production plan is, is our blueprint to get us to, you know, ten percent and maintain, um, that ten percent, uh, threshold. Um, there's over a hundred communities in Massachusetts with a, um, active housing production plan. Um, Karen Sonnberg, who is here, um, she has worked with Grafton for many years on the housing production plan. She did our two thousand eight, twenty thirteen, and twenty eighteen plans, and now she's doing her twenty twenty-three plan, so we're very lucky to have her. Um, some background about the project, uh, we started the project in early twenty twenty-three, um, and there's been a variety of outreach and data gathering as part of that effort, um, including, um, meeting, multiple meetings with the, um, well, multiple Planning Board meetings to discuss the topic, as well as many meetings, the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, we did have two community forums, one in June and one most recently in November at the Community Barn. Um, they were all very successful. Uh, feedback that was gathered at those forums as well as during interview processes with staff and other stakeholders conducted by Karen, resulted in the, uh, goals and strategies that you, you have before you in the plan. Um, so with that, I think probably the best, um, use of the time, because it is a long document, is to go over any particular questions that members of the Planning Board, Select Board, and the trust may have for Karen, 'cause she, she is um, more of the expert than I and can answer some of those granular questions that you may have. Um, so if, if no one has any questions for me after my spiel, I, uh, will turn it over to Karen.
Thanks, Fiona. That was a terrific introduction to our planning process and to the plans in, uh, in general, and, uh, so, uh, yeah, we'll just open up to any questions or comments.
Sounds good. Um, do you guys wanna go first, and then, um, I'll open up questions from the Select Board?
Well, by and large, we've, uh, approved the draft that you have before you. We have, um, a couple of clerical things, um, and some administrative things in the document that, um, we'd like to have the ability to, uh, correct as we see them. You know, spelling corrections for people's names, um, you know, as new people have come on since the document has been published or in draft form. Um, you know, appointees or things that various boards and committees, we like to have the opportunity to change those on the fly without, um, it's the Planning Board and the Select Board's authority for, you know, the meat and potatoes of the particular document. But the process kinda begins with us, and we kind of take it through its infancy into its maturity, whereas now we end it off to you folks for its final approval. So as long as you're understanding of the substance and you're okay with the substance, and give us the ability to make sure we can make any, you know, minor changes in the document as it goes.
Okay. Um, planning?
Anything from Planning Board members?
All right, Select Board.
Mr. Chair.
Just the, the one question I have that Mr. Robbins might know this, but from attending some of these meetings that I may have missed, is on the, you know, table, I won the summary of housing strategies in particular, just the, you know, responsible party. One thing that struck me is, um, the not seeing it right now, but the, the one for for lots that are non-conforming. It did say planning, but I was not sure if that would be ZBA in that case. B four, thank you. I knew I saw it. Allow affordable housing on non, non-complying lots, years three to five, responsible parties, Planning Board.
I think that that is, that the idea there is to modify the zoning bylaw to accommodate that.
That's right.
All right. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Uh, anything from Select Board?
Nope.
Yeah. Mr. Jefferson, come on in.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to take a minute to thank Karen for all her efforts on this. Uh, she put on a couple really wonderful public outreach sessions and, and workshops. Um, it, it was, it was, the, it was just great. I mean, it was very thorough and, and really going through things, um, explaining them well. For the, those of us who are sitting here, uh, I'd like us to continue For the those of us who are sitting here, uh I'd like us to continue to keep the housing production plan on our minds uh and not simply check off the box that uh it's complete and it's one step closer, you know, one one necessary step, I should say in, you know, certifying that that temporary safe safe harbor status. Um as as Mr. Wood mentioned, uh in the I one table, um there are a lot of actionable items there. Specifically that involve this board, the Planning Board, and the Trust. There are extensive community notes and appendices, and input and appendices four and five. Um and I really, I think we should continue to focus on a lot of these points and and explore uh the options that are in front of us, rather than just saying produ- production plan's done and and set it aside. Um there's some some really important zoning updates that can be made and and strides that that we could um we could strive for.
On on that topic, I'll, my two cents on that is, one of my pet peeves is plans to get written, approved, and put on a shelf. Uh this plan will feed into the master plan, the master plan, a a major part of the master plan process is housing. So all the work that went into the housing production plan will feed into the master plan. And my, one of my ultimate goals for the master plan is to come out of it with some you know, well-defined action items and commitments to follow through on them. So while while the this plan in in and of itself has a lot of strategies, but doesn't doesn't really go so far as to make any commitments to get these things, to see these things through. That's something that I'm hoping our master plan process will incorporate and 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 build on the recommendations made by the housing production plan.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that.
Yep, I agree, um and I think, you know, I'd like to see a, hopefully a commitment from the Select Board to include this in our um upcoming discussion about goals and objectives. Um I think this is a really important document, um and uh so a lot of insights that came from the analysis, um and it was very clear, reading through the document, um the depth of analysis that was done and the amount of um metrics and data that was crunched to come up with some of these um really valuable insights. Um and for anybody who might be uh tempted, um next time they hear that there's a a housing crisis in Massachusetts, to roll their eyes. Um I I really, before you roll your eyes at that comment, please just do everybody a favor and read this document. Um it describes very well what the problem is with housing in Massachusetts and very locally here in Grafton. Um this isn't a general problem that's described in the housing production plan, this is what's actually happening in Grafton. Um so I I would encourage people to read that. One of the key insights that I took away from it that um has uh emerged recently, um we talked in the tax classification hearing earlier about the dramatic increase in um home values in Grafton. Um this uh plan describes what's happening, we have people moving in from the southern and eastern regions of Massachusetts, seeking affordability. Um what that's doing in Grafton is uh giving us a supply-demand um issue and uh that results in significantly higher housing uh values. Um which results then in a significant gap in terms of the the median income in Grafton and and the housing that's available, so there's now a significant gap, and it it's mentioned that uh people at the eighty percent area median income, um there's a shortfall of around seventeen hundred units in Grafton. So um for anybody that doesn't think that the uh eighty percent AMI um threshold equates to affordability in Grafton, it does. W- we need a lot more units at the eighty percent threshold, that's not to say that we couldn't use more at fifty, sixty, thirty percent. Um but uh a affordability has now changed in Grafton, because the home values have um dramatically increased. Um the need for affordable housing, even at that eighty percent, has uh also grown dramatically. Um so uh for me, that was a pretty key insight that um that I read from this document, and the other describes a pretty good um need for uh housing for se- the senior population and the elder population in Grafton. As one of the top concerns um described in the plan, so um I do encourage people to read this, it's an excellent document.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Almo.
Who put this document together? Just out of curiosity. I can hear.
So the 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 document itself is, every five years, um at least while I've been on the Trust, we essentially um get the mission statement to put it together. So this particular year, we use the consultant that we've used in the past to put the document together. This particular um iteration of it is uniquely important because, you know, you get fresh census data. Um which really strengthens the the demographic information and, you know, things like that you can actually put in the document. Whereas the ones that are every, you know, in the fifth year are much harder to track that information. But essentially, the the trust goes out hires the consultants, um we work with staff um like Fiona and Amber, who do the yeoman's work on these type of things. We put together what we want to see, what we want to encourage them to study, and then like most things, the municipal government staff goes out there and and does it for us. Um and does it very, very well, so they've done the yeoman's work on this, and then of course Karen works with the state and has the the knowledge to understand what you're gonna need with the state bureaucracy and how to handle that, what the document needs to look like, what type of information needs to be included, to check all the boxes that are needed. And then she runs it through the formal process, you know, like Fiona was mentioning, it's a whole bunch of you know, outreach meetings and then concluding in this particular meeting where you actually have the executive authorities in town sign off on it.
Yeah, I asked because it's outstanding.
Yeah, she does fantastic work.
Yeah, it's um, I kind of wanted to give credit to Fiona and say, wow, she does amazing work, but I guess it's more than just her. Uh because it's incredibly insightful, it is incredibly informative. And I don't know that you're gonna get, Mr. Chairman, all the residents of the town to read it, but it's a heck of a guide to to learn more about it. Certainly eye-opening, in my opinion, I think your outreach has been great, uh I attended two meetings myself. I have some, just a a couple of questions or just curious about a couple of things, one is the elderly population that Mr. Chairman um referred to, what consideration um specifically are we giving, or what is the conversation with everybody and whoever has that conversation, I'm just curious, because it does call it out, obviously, in the report, and it's pretty important.
Karen.
Well, yeah, I mean, we certainly documented the um increase in seniors uh over the past couple decades and projected to continue to increase. Us baby boomers, you know, we're we're driving it um for sure. And we did, you know, ha- I had really good uh conversation with the Council on Aging about the needs that they see for seniors and housing being a a super priority. Um and so, you know, within the, you know, the recommendations, um there will be opportunities to create additional units for uh seniors. Um and correlated to that is the, you know, expected increase in those who have special needs. Because that's the, as we already have, ten percent of residents claim some type of disability, and as the population continues to age, there is gonna be increasing need there as well. So, you know, clearly, um you know, uh keeping, you know, uh Grafton seniors in safe and a- a- accessible, attainable housing is important.
Yeah, it definitely important to me, and I'm sure everybody else here, uh please continue to do that, keep them top of mind. Is this more of a guideline? So we talk about folding this into the master plan, so the these are your insights and recommendations, but in twenty twenty six maybe something, conditions changed in the town, in the state, in the world. Do we have an opportunity to pivot, make adjustments, how do you, how do you view this document or your or your report?
So just like in any other particular setting, it's, you know, like the master plan. You set it out, you have a a routine by which you have to set it out, that's kind of statutory or required, but appearing to the plan is at the discretion of the town. So if you want to dive back into this in in three years, because some type of, you know, metric shift in the populace or things of that nature, you can go back and and retail this, also, it's good to revisit it in a timely manner, because you'll see that there's a lot of developments that may be in the pipeline or projected, when those come to completion, they have a substantive impact on, you know, the rest of the document, so you really need to go back and take a look. But it is every five years that it has to be done, and we'll say in this particular document to David's point is, we I believe the Trust wants to um it has an executive, you know, piece to it, so a summary, but um it's still relatively high level. So we have to do this, because we have to get it done by the end of the year, so Karen's been employed to get us the 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 big document that you have in front of us, but taking that and making it a little bit more digestible is something that we're working with staff and then CMR PC on, you know, to do a one or two sheets that gives you the important highlighted facts. So if you are new to the town, um or if you're just getting involved in municipal governments, um then you can look at the document without having to read it in its entirety, which most people would get lost on. But you can evaluate just the key players, the, you know, the committees that are assigned to different roles in the town. And then all that key demographic information that's important to have a, in your conversation piece. So something, hopefully, then the master plan rolls out, we'll take into guidance as well. Because by and large, you know, there's there's a few of us that enjoy, really enjoy this stuff. Um but the other ninety nine point eight percent does not. So it's, you know, finding time to actually get involved in these type of things can be a little bit daunting. So that's something we want to continue to do with this particular document. I will say, um Matt, Ed had, I think he had his hands up, I I can only see the monitor on the corner.
So he doesn't have his hand up at the moment, but uh Mr. Priz- Prisby, if you had a a comment, um come on in.
Nope, I'm I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great. Alright, um any additional questions, comments, or discussion?
You you were talking about the older population, I I just particularly think of the fixed income population, that's, you might guess, of interest to me, but um that's that's been a problem since they invented taxes, uh like we have now, so.
Absolutely.
Try to keep that in mind.
Alright, any more for any more? If not, I will take a motion.
Alright, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve the housing production plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Barring none, all those?
One thing, do you want to amend the motion to include non-substantive changes to name spelling?
Please do.
Pagination numbering.
Okay, so moved.
Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
I have motion and a seconds, the amended motion. All those in favor, Ms. Foley?
Foley, I.
Me, I.
Alamo, I.
Austin, I.
Jefferson, I.
The uh motion carries.
Now, I think we need, we need a Planning Board action also. Maybe someone wants to make the same motion.
I'll move that the Planning Board uh support the housing production plan as presented with any corrections, with the same caveat that was in the Select Board's motion regarding non-substantive changes.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none.
We'll have to do a roll call, but we can.
All those in favor?
No, well, um that's right, all uh all um, well, I don't know, it says all votes will be taken by roll call.
Would I.
David's an I.
Robbins, I.
Hassinger, I. Motion carried unanimously.
If you don't mind.
Got approvals from both of, both boards, like they say we need.
Bravo.
Um Karen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all the work that you put into this, um phenomenal effort, um it it definitely took a village for this. Lots and lots of people.
It was a real team effort, and it uh once again, a great pressure uh pleasure to work with you folks, and uh we'll get this right into the state. And um they are turning their approvals around fairly quickly, so it'd be great to get something uh affirmative by the end of the year.
Fabulous, um and thank you Fiona.
At this point, I think unless you need the Planning Board to talk to anymore.
We're good.
Um.
I'll move that the Planning Board meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Moved in second, that's not debatable.
Would I.
David's an I.
Robbins, I.
Hassinger, I.
Thank you, planning.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're gonna do the same, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Here a second, so we are, oh, do I have Ed still?
Oh, no.
Alright then.
Adjourned by default.
Yeah, all those that, no, we actually have four, because Andy's here, so, all those in favor, we'll also do it by roll call, starting with Andy.
Jefferson, I.
Nicole, I.
Good, your I.
Bruce is a no. I lost.
Hey Nikki, can you stay just for the, for the next, not the next one, but the one right after that? Thanks so much for coming, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Trust.
See you, Bob.
Well done.
Bye Fiona, thank you.
Popular girl.
I remember.
Yeah. Sure you do.
You remember.
I do.
I remember when you first.
Give it a minute to settle here. Alright, uh next up, we have a letter of support for the Grafton Water District, this is related to the PFAS requirement. Um and uh this was something that Ms. Foley asked to um put on the agenda, so um I'll let her uh kick off the conversation.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair, um yes, this was, by the way, just a very preliminary first stab, not even a first stab at this letter, this was not meant for us to sign tonight necessarily. Uh but just got some thoughts on paper, but um essentially just looking to figure out how we can support our water district um moving forward with this, you know, essentially unfun- or potentially unfunded mandate that they're looking at, so I was just looking to get a sense of the board in terms of supporting or their support for a letter that we would send to our, you know, state officials, uh David Meridian and Michael Moore specifically. Um you know, eh to just at least put it out there that perhaps some funding mechanism might be um in order. And as stated in, you know, just some some info that I put in the letter, is like, we're looking at twenty to thirty million dollars and and Matt actually said, you know, possibly more, right, so it would be, it's gonna be a big hit for a lot of of these communities. Um I'm not against uh the 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 idea of this from the EPA, but um as you may may have uh suspected, um but I do understand the 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 that, you know, the 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 share that our, these water districts will have to um incur. So three out of the four of our water plants will be impacted, as from what I understand. Um so just looking for, I guess, a a sense from the board if we'd be willing to put together a letter to um submit. And then obviously, we can tweak this and tease it and get some input from from Matt, from the water district, et cetera.
Um thanks for uh setting the context, I appreciate it. Um any, any discussion on this?
So Emery, this would go to uh um David and uh and Mike, Mike Moore?
Yeah, for sure, and maybe per- perhaps others, but to start, yeah.
Alright, problem.
Any other comments?
I'm I'm in favor of this, um and I think it's actually pretty well-written. Um the only thing that um I would want to validate, I suppose, um is the estimated twenty to thirty million dollars, um where where did that come from, Emery?
Oh, from the water district, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, but possibly more would, is what they said, so that that's the bottom, you know, number to start with. Um so yeah, I I'm certainly happy to tweak it and or get assistance from from anyone that wants to hop in, and and I would probably reach out to Matt even, just to be sure on what we're putting in here, but no, I feel confident with those numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I agree with with Emery, that's uh, that's the numbers I've heard from the water district as well.
Okay. Um well, it um, do I have any uh board uh recommendations in terms of uh amendments to the to submit a document?
I think it's as good as it is.
It's good, yeah.
If the water district hasn't reviewed it yet, I'd like to give them the opportunity to to review it before we submit it, but other than that, I have no objections. If the water district hasn't reviewed it yet, I'd like to give them the opportunity to to review it before we submit it, but other than that, I have no objections.
And additionally, just to add, Mr. Chair, um I would like to time it appropriately. For the water district in in terms of, you know, when this is going to be coming up, et cetera, but I'll find out that information. So in other words, it it, you know, we're probably not gonna submit it straight away, but we'll see what the timing is in terms of this coming down the pike.
Got it, um should we pass it along to them with an authorization for them to, for, you know, send it along with our, on our behalf? You know, when it's appropriate.
You you hmm, you could authorize either the chair to sign it or me to sign it on the board's behalf. And with and and send it at the appropriate time, whenever Emery.
Yep.
Finds that to be acceptable.
Okay.
Something that I don't think it has to be, you know, super tight.
Sure.
Right. I think we can get that info from Matt.
Yes.
From the water district, yeah.
Sounds good, um well, it sounds like everybody's pretty happy with this, Emery.
Um, great, thank you.
So, thank you, you did the work.
Just so you know, I I sorry to um interrupt, but I saw David at the Veterans or the um. Yeah, the Veterans Day event and just mentioned it from a personal perspective. And this is what he thought would be something that we could do, so.
Um, it's a good, great idea, um so with that said, um I'll take a motion.
Okay, that's me.
Uh hang on, hang on, Emery.
So, so, Mr. Chair.
No, it's fine.
I'm, oh, sorry. Um, I move the board vote to authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of support. Um, for the water district.
Yep.
I don't know.
PFAS Reduction Project.
Thank you, cuz I don't, I'm not sure if this will be your doc, uh maybe it's, it was just a quick, quick one, in my opinion, so, okay. So I move the board vote to authorize the chair to sign and send a letter in support of the Grafton Water District. Um, relative to the PFAS um chemicals.
Would you like to put a condition on that for the water district approval?
Yes, please.
Okay, can we just add the condition that it's reviewed by the water district?
Yep.
Great.
Once reviewed by the water district and, I mean, I can bring it back too, by the way.
Well, that's what I was wondering, uh cuz. I was, Ms. Foley, it said, it it wasn't a a rush per se, so. If we want to have them review it and then we could just vote it in a a subsequent meeting as as opposed to doing it now, I don't really have a problem either way, but. It's just, we had just talked about that it wasn't really a rush, so.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm for that, Andy, uh because I. Put this letter together in response to a request for more from, you know, just to put, get something into the packet, so. I would be happy to, if we can um review, come back to this.
Okay.
So.
If you want to just rescind your motion, then um.
Sorry, yep, I'll rescind the motion and um we will get the letter ready. Sometime in the near future and bring it back to the board.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Much. Alright, uh next we are on to the Economic Development Commission's Business Survey, Ray, if you'd like to uh head this one up.
Yeah, so the, so uh everybody's got the, got this in their packet, um it's the survey that's going to be going out uh next week. Um, Nicole Ethea is here and she's on the uh EDC Committee. And and Nikki, if you can just talk up the business uh dinner thing that we're doing.
Oh, sure, yeah, so we've organized a a Grafton Business Owner Networking Event. January twenty-fourth at Post Office Pub from five to eight P M. Um, so basically, we wanna gather all Grafton Business Owners, we're gonna review the survey. Um, which basically asks people, you know, what can the EDC do to help you drive more business to Grafton? What other businesses um do you think would, we could bring into the town to complement the businesses that we already have? Um, things like that, so just an opportunity to talk with business owners face to face. Um, and then I think John Allen also wants to um do like a comprehensive kind of overview of the master plan too, so just. Taking again another opportunity to, you know, talk about all the great things that the town is doing.
Alright.
And hopefully we'll have, you know, we'll have a good turnout, um we're sending it out to uh over two hundred businesses, correct?
Yep, and then um I'm planning to do boots on the ground, um you know, giving out flyers, personal invites, so. If you know Grafton Business Owners, talk it up for us.
There you go, Grafton celebrates the holidays, it's coming right up, people will be all over town.
Yeah.
Visiting local businesses.
Yes.
What time is it?
Five to eight P M. Five to eight P M.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Yep, it'll be good.
Mr. Chair, I had one question. Um, I I didn't know if there was the opportunity to make any amendments to the survey. The only thing that I noticed, um question six, seven, eight, nine, you know, generally uh are about. Pro what's been pro-business in Grafton, what's kind of been uh a roadblock. Um, on question six, on all of them, we have select all that apply and we give the the. Uh respondent the option to select as many as they want. Um, on seven, eight, and nine, we give them a field to offer a comment, but we don't do that on six. And six is, again, it's an open ended question, um. I just wondered if there was the opportunity for us to give them a comment field on that one as well, in case um their answer doesn't pertain to one of the existing. Um, options.
Um, there actually is, Andy, there there actually is a comment box on each one of them, maybe it's just not on there on number six.
Okay.
Um, but there is, there is a comment box on each, on each question.
Yeah, I I just, like I said, I didn't see one on six, so that was the only one that. But, yep, great.
Okay. Any other comments?
Nicely done, Ray.
Yeah.
So it's not me.
Thank you.
Nicely done, team.
Thank you. Fiona has her hand up, Mr. Chair. Oh Fiona, come on in.
Hello, thank you so much, I just wanted to uh commend the EDC for this effort, this is critically important. Um, for all the reasons we talked about this evening, obviously, we know that it's important to stimulate economic development in town. I just wanted to offer assistance for circulating this and um also merging these efforts with. All of the other planning efforts, namely the master plan planning process that's going on, I believe that the event on the twenty-fourth, CMR PC. Is coming to speak and present as well, um and I'll be helping coordinate that. Um, but yeah, just just let me know what what you need to um get this out, the survey is great, it's it's succinct and it's not a ton of um. There's an open response, which is good, but there's not too much open response, cuz I find that surveys are most effective when you get the multiple choice, cuz for data. Crunching, et cetera, but so, well done, and um yeah, just keep, let me know on what you need from planning, um we'll 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 do it.
Fantastic, thanks. Any other uh comments?
Nope, that's it.
Alright, great. Then let's move right along.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki, uh next up we have the library union contract. Mr. Brassler, take it away.
So, we have been in negotiations for uh probably about six months, um just start to finish, not uh. Not every day, um but we have finally reached an agreement, the union voted to ratify uh last week. And so now all that's left to do is for the select board to ratify. It is a fairly standard contract, there's nothing in there that I think um I need to call out as significant. Um, outliers, um it does provide some additional compensation for folks that are working from the five to nine shift and on Saturdays. Um, we we did find that to be consistent among libraries that have library unions throughout the state. Um, we were able to uh change around some job descriptions and some classifications to get more. Uh management support on the floor, um and solve just some kind of uh nagging issues that the. Uh, the union employees have had for a number of years, so uh all in all, I think a very productive conversation, um. As per usual, cordial, you know, no real us them mentality, it was. It was a a very nice conversation as far as negotiations go.
Good.
Um, and, you know, typical cola that we've been seeing in other ones that range between two and three percent, so.
Comments? Mr. Jefferson?
Um, question, actually, and I don't know if it's gonna be easier to to bring these up on screen or or whatever, but um. In Article twelve, it covers hours of working in working conditions.
Mm-hmm.
When we talk about parking lots and walkways in the event of snow and ice, um they'll be plowed or treated by the town operations. Uh, may remain closed, if snow or ice occurs during working hours, uh those pathways should be kept reasonably clear and maintained by the town. Um, but then later on, in Article twenty-three of the dress code, we state additionally during winter months, employees are tasked with keeping walkways clear. Spreading salt, sand, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I assume the intent is if sidewalks or walkways need a touch up, that we would be able to ask library staff to do so. Um, but I wondered if or who would determine what is a reasonable amount of work there versus. Uh, sending staff home as dictated in the hours of working conditions.
Thanks, Anna, you picked a tremendously easy question to answer. Um, we spent, I don't know, hours on that exact discussion point, so you hit that nail right on the head. Um, so. To sum up all of that, reasonable uh is subjective, as we know, which is my issue with anything in a contract that says reasonable. Um, however, what we wound up running into here, uh and will probably continue to run into, is that. There are policies for the building set by the Library Board of Trustees, and there are union negotiations that are handled by. Uh, the town administrator and our staff. And so we have to stay true to language that the Library Board of Trustees use in their policies. While also trying to find a way for us all to agree of what that looks like. Um, and so while yes, uh staff are able to do touch ups and and things like that. Um, the. The best way to put that is that if at any time the union feels that we have kept people in the building at an unreasonable time, then they would grieve that. And that would help us to understand where that threshold would would ultimately be at the end of the day. There's no real clean way to do it, nobody was really happy with that, it's just as far as we could get on that particular issue.
It makes sense doing it that way.
We'll see, ask me in the wintertime. Yeah, but um that was a tough one for all of us at the table, actually.
Um, so was the library director, um I guess, what what was Beth's involvement?
She was present and for all the negotiations, so.
Okay.
Um, this is, uh, there's nothing in this document that she would not be privy to.
Okay, um I would just was um reflecting on the requirements uh to provide working hours thirty days in advance and. Thinking about um. The changes in terms of uh. Which rooms are open, which programs are being put on and all that, but as long as she's um privy and and happy with the contract, then. That's hers to manage, I suppose.
Yeah, and we did have quite a robust dialogue around that and talked about moving things, um you know, do we do twenty days, do you do two weeks, do you do? We we hashed all that out and that's, that's where the group settled was reasonable and. Um, you know, as as with most union contracts, um. Everyone wants to see the schedule thirty days in advance and that's gonna be your baseline schedule. It's subject to change, they, we have management rights to be able to move people and change people, so um. People just need to have a reasonable assumption of what's going to happen, and then we need to be able to be flexible when it gets a little bit closer, so. That was part of the conversation, and and I don't think that's a lot different than what's really happening in in actuality.
Okay.
But yes, she was present for that and agreed.
Great. Um. The uh dress code was pretty interesting.
That's actually the existing dress code that we just hatched into here.
Um, I haven't seen, well, I shouldn't say that.
That that was a, yeah, it was another interesting, um it's it's. It's surprisingly difficult to write a ca- a a dress code in twenty twenty-three. Honestly, so um at the end of the day, I was happy with it.
Good.
So, and I think the library staff were as well.
And you're happy with the grievance to start with the library director, then uh move on to you.
Yes.
To us.
Yep, yep, I think that makes the most sense.
Alright.
Okay.
Makes sense, I don't have any more questions. Alright, um Emery, did you have any uh questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll take a question.
Your chair.
Mr. Foley, Miss, Miss Foley.
I move the board vote to ratify the library union agreement.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor, by roll call, Ms. Foley.
Sorry, Foley, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Austin, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Alright, the motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I just wanna thank uh Will Blake and uh Beth Schreiber for um. All their their assistance on this negotiation, uh this was during the time when I was out for a number of of meetings. Uh, with illness and they really picked up the the torch and and ran with it, uh as well as the library staff and uh the union representatives, it was. Uh, not as difficult as it could have been, um and this is the first time we've done, that I've done a ground up. Union implementation of a contract, so that was a new experience for me as well, so I just wanted to thank everyone involved and uh it was, it was good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have um the opioid uh settlement fund discussion.
Uh, yeah, so this is just authorize the opioid committee um to be able to administer the National Opioid Settlement Fund, so if you recall. We uh, this board voted to enter into the settlement agreements with the opioid companies, we've now been receiving some of that funding. Um, we then used town meeting to move that into a, an account, uh and now you need to authorize the folks. That are on the Board of Health Subcommittee to oversee National Opioid Settlement Funds, to be able to actually administer those funds.
Questions, comments? Alright, I'll take a motion.
I actually have one question, so this, the committee, is this like an open committee that will, that's meeting and we can see when they meet or?
Oh, yeah, yes, it has to follow open meeting law and all the rest of it.
Yep, and so that's on the website, if folks are interested to see those meetings and where the funds are going.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think they've actually met yet in this capacity.
Sure, okay, uh Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to authorize the opioid committee to administer the administer the National Opioid Settlement Funds.
I have motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor by roll call, Ms. Foley.
Foley, aye.
Me, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Austin, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Alright, next up we have uh OPEB discussion.
Yeah, I I just wanted to put this on here, um and call out a a few of our staff that have been doing really great work. Um, so this is Sarah Gruin, she's actually a consultant with us that works with retirees specifically. Uh Krista Marat, uh she was our payroll benefits person and now is the payroll benefits person for the schools. Um, and then uh Kristen Passacane, who's our new payroll and payroll and benefit person. Um, so they were extra diligent and able to um. Work through our census data for our OPEB, which is Other Post-Employee Benefits Report, um so if you recall, our, our um. Our um, man. We need to have eighty-three million dollars in the bank in order to satisfy our OPEB requirement, um through their work, they were able to. Uh, lower our liabilities by three million dollars, uh which, you know, it's this kind of. Kind of i- idea that's just floating out there in the ether to a lot of people, um but to be able to reduce that by three million dollars is a. A lot of money that we don't have to pay over the next uh twenty years, so. Really good work on their part, and I'd like to thank them for that.
Outstanding.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
Similarly, I mean, that that is a massive accomplishment, um our OPEB numbers were incredibly bad. Um, and almost at the point of why bother, um it was. This is a great undertaking, um and and a lot of money for them to have recouped, so um just doubling down on the kudos.
Yep, yeah, um I guess I'll just comment, um eighty-three million dollars or eighty plus million, I mean, it's a. Astronomical number, um but myself, I'm not a fan of the why bother approach, um. But, you know, the reality of it is, OPEB has no funding source, so it's something that uh every town's gotta sort of figure out their way to. Manufacture some revenue um to put into their OPEB um funds and uh it's, it's a huge challenge, so. Um, every little bit helps and three million dollars, wow, um that's a, that's a great, great, great accomplishment, so thank you all. Of the staff that worked on that, um and the consultant. Any other questions, comments?
Same, I agree with you too.
Okay, alright, um great, well then let us move on to the discussion of the the uh. Year of our Lord, um from uh the town meeting warrant, um so this came. Year of Our Lord um from uh the Town Meeting Warrant. Um so this came up from a uh communication to the town from a resident, um which was then basically passed through the TA office who connected up with the um Clerk's Office, um who sent us a communication saying if this is something you guys are um, if the town's interested in, that the s- select board should should uh provide that recommendation. I think that's about right, yeah. So so really, this the discussion is about um uh the 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 words Year of Our Lord in the fall, well, in in the Town Meeting Warrant. The the comment from the resident was uh along the lines of um, this is not uh inclusive um and could be problematic for anybody who doesn't um worship in a certain way. And uh so with that, I guess I'll just open up the conversation.
Chairman.
Mr. Mead.
Even though I believe every year is the Year of Our Lord, I do not have a problem in uh removing this from town meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alamo.
So I didn't even uh hear it. It's probably because of my first meeting and I was thinking about other things. But that doesn't mean it's not important. So when I first read this uh letter, I thought to myself, geez, why did that happen? And I didn't I didn't catch it. And then I thought to myself, well, it could be, while it's important to one person to remove the language, it could equal be equally be as important to others to keep the language. And in the context of what we're talking about, there are re- religious implications, so I wanted to find out if, and and I may have run this to ground a little bit too thoroughly. I admit, but I was curious and I had time to do it. It's been out there for about three weeks. So I reached out to my personal ecosystem of people, some folks in town, uh some folks out of town, people from three different faiths, uh and people that were agnostic. And just tried to explore how important their faith was and then at talked about this language. And there's no question that there that it's important, their their personal faith. And so when you look at it from that context, you gotta be thinking, well, I'm thinking, well, wait, you know, it's a little bit more important than maybe moving a telephone pole ten feet to the right or ten feet to the left. What was interesting, though, was that the more common discussion, as I got into these longer conversations. So if my boss is wondering what I was doing upstairs all this time, it was me hiding, talking to people during the day. It was interesting because people would ask me, how many people have asked to remove this language? And how many people are for it? And I said, well, I've talked to a couple dozen people in town. And there's at least ten people and people have reached out to me that want to keep the language. And so I only know of this one inquiry, so in that context, I would not be in favor of changing the language. And it's not because of the religious implications. It's more because it's one single individual and I've heard from others that want to keep that language. With that said, I'm super like open to like a way to find some common ground for everybody, so whoever's interested in all of this, fi- I mean, we put some time into a survey for economic development, um and I'm not sure that's what you would do. But I'd really be open to a constructive dialogue because ironically, there were people that were for this, that subscribed to this language and are associated with the religious affiliate or affiliated with this particular religion that were very clear about how important it is to be inclusive and to how important it is to be sensitive and recognize people's thoughts and feelings about this. So while I'm not in favor of changing it because of the, you know, the the amount of people that have told me that they'd like to keep it, I am in favor of a discussion about how to find common ground.
Okay. Thanks. And thanks for the thorough.
Uh it it got interesting, I know, I know. It just got it got interesting for me.
That's good stuff. Um, Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah, um I feel similarly to Mr. Alamo. I don't have any strong feelings about it myself. Uh I'm I'm just, it's just not a big deal to me. It always kind of struck me as odd in a bit oldie time, you know, just a like a puritanical throwback. I I am also in agreement that um just because one person requested it doesn't mean um there's action necessary. I certainly um, I don't think I'd be in favor of voting on anything tonight, but to Mr. Alamo's point, if we had an appetite to do any sort of outreach or, I'm not sure, public hearing is the best way to go just because of attendance and you know how however we could decide to engage with people, I guess, um I'd be open to at least having that discussion.
Emery, do you have any uh observations, thoughts?
Yeah, I guess similarly to the last two fellows, uh I'm, you know, not gonna live and die by this one per se. I think, you know, it's a historical term, obviously, of Latin origin relative to AD. Um so I find it interesting, again, I grew up in Canada, but um you know, you do the pledge, right, before every meeting that we have as the select board members and additionally at the town meeting? And I've often, I think similar to Mark, um and I've been to every town meeting since I've lived here. I've not noticed that we say that or that the clerk says that at the outset, but what I do notice is the 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 notion of the pledge. Uh full disclosure, I'm Christian. I have no problem, Catholic, you know, practicing. Um I have no problem with the 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 language. I just find, I wondered, I've wondered if folks you know, we stand up and we do the pledge before each meeting, so I thought that I think that that's for me more interesting than this. Um I I guess my question, and again, I I'm similar to the to Andy and 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 I'm I'm sorry, Mark. I'm not going to, you know, vote yea or nay per se, but would this be something like the the town, a town meeting? Would or 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 it shouldn't come to that? Would vote on or, yeah. And I've, uh similar to Mark, I've had folks reach out to me on both sides of this um with, you know, valid information. It just seems to me the context of this particular Year of Our Lord is is um is the notion of that, you know, AD in Latin, so it's interesting that that is um an issue, but I agree that, you know, we shouldn't perhaps be changing things based on on one person's um input. However, it's duly noted as we are all talking about, right? I'll leave it at that. I'm not sure if that helps at all.
Mr. Mead. I'm not aware that this is red, okay? It's on the front page of the of the Town Meeting Warrant. And it's not, it's not red and and as is, along with Mark, I did a lot of, I talked to a lot of people about this. And um because I had a very strong feeling as soon as as soon as I saw this, that it's it's one person and, you know, it is the Year of Our Lord and that's again what I believe. But not everybody believes that, so so is it a big deal to remove it from the front page of the town meeting? It's not red. No one ever reads it.
I believe the clerk does.
The clerk does.
I think the clerk does, yeah.
It's part, it's the return of the warrant.
Oh, the return of the warrant, okay. But but I just, I I just don't see, again, after talking to numerous people, I I I just don't see the need for it. It just goes away.
Any other comments? All right, um I guess I'll just weigh in um with my thoughts. Um a lot of things start with a single resident and and a request, you know, so. Uh for for me, the fact that it comes from an individual, it's that that person and their concern um and their requests, um I'm guessing isn't unique in Grafton. So so there is a um you know, a a larger constituent that probably has that same concern.
Sure.
I'm not super passionate about this one myself, but I also feel like, you know, this board funded a um DE and I audit along with the school. Um and part of that was to um you know, be more inclusionary in in our um the way that we um approach things in Grafton. Um we put a menorah on uh the common, uh which I was hugely in favor of, um which kind of falls along the same lines, um you know, we so I I don't know. My gut says um that we should consider removing it, but I take the point um you know, from uh Andy and Mark, that both have indicated that this is something that probably should be discussed. I don't that, you know, this to me wouldn't be something that I would bring to town meeting or even probably I I don't know. I don't know what the right way to solicit some input might be. Um but I also don't know that that would help us much, make a decision about this, because I think what we're gonna get is people of all perspectives uh weighing in, so in the end, then we we're still gonna have to just make a decision, so I I don't know. It's uh I, that's probably not helping move the conversation, though.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mead.
I know Colleen's got her hand up out there.
Come on up.
Come back to me after.
Colleen Roy, fifty-three Elmond, I just have a question. I know it's part of the warrant, it needs to be read. Can it stay in the warrant, but just that part not read out loud, so kind of best of all the worlds, where it's there for the people who want it, but the people who don't want to hear it won't hear it. And it's already been mentioned a couple times where people didn't hear it that were there.
Most people don't hear it.
I know I heard it every time and I was thinking, how long is it gonna take before we have this conversation? Um but is that, are they allowed to just not read that part, or if it's in there, it has to be read?
I I don't know that you actually have to read the return of the warrant. I think that some towns do not and that that's a Grafton tradition. But I don't have a firm answer on that. That's not something I predicted would come up.
Okay. That's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
I'd be in, I'm always in favor of making town meetings shorter, so not actually reading the warrant. Um and posting it might be uh an interesting way to go about it. Um we used to, you know, read the uh planning board report, for example, and uh I'm sorry, the uh finance committee report. Um we just make it available now with all of the other town reports, um so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the board does uh takes no action on this.
Second.
Second. I have a motion in three seconds.
Just so you know.
Okay.
Who better first?
Any discussion? Uh all those in favor, by roll call, Ms. Foley.
Foley, I.
Me, I.
Alamo, I.
Austin, I.
Jefferson, I.
All right, the motion carries. Uh so we are moving on. Next up, we have uh William has prepared our next policy review and this is on Corey Sori.
Yep, so um as I'm sure most of you are aware, um we need to perform criminal offender record information checks as well as sex offender registration information uh checks uh for different employees of the town of Grafton. Um we have not had a Corey Sori uh check approval policy in the past, uh which does lead to some ambiguity over what happens when you find something. Uh and this policy uh really spells that out, what that what that looks like, so the meat of it is the part that says uh policy, where it says that um any identification of a sex offender will not be permitted to volunteer or produ- participate uh in our programming um involving um minors or the elderly. Um and then the Corey checks are if someone has a criminal record regardless of conviction, non conviction, report will be provided to my office for review, uh and the applicant may not participate until a decision is rendered by the town administrator's office.
All right. Questions, comments?
Uh Mr. Chair.
Miss Foley.
Just a couple of typos, so if in the motion I can just address those or we can correct those.
Yeah.
So just on the third line, um it says direct who may have direct and contract with minors, so it's probably meant to be um direct contact?
Yes.
And then also on under applicability, this policy is applicability to, it's probably meant to be applicable to?
Yep.
Um and then lastly, I just wanted to get clarification on this. Under policy, uh sorry, let me just look at my notes. The intent of this, like, any identification of a sex offender will not be permitted to volunteer. So was that maybe meant to state, perhaps this is language is meant to be there, or is it that if anyone is identified as a sex offender, they will not be permitted to volunteer?
Good, the the latter.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, so what what happened here, and I'm I'm seeing it as as we're looking at it, you can see there's kind of two spaces between offender and will. Um so Will and I uh workshopped this language uh right before it went on here, and I'm assuming that that's just a typo of language that fell off.
So, Mr. Chair.
Miss Foley.
Uh I'll present a motion for consideration if that's.
Yep, go for it.
Just further discussion. Um so I move the board vote to approve and sign the Corey Sori check approval policy as presented with the three um edits as noted.
Fantastic. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Ms. Foley.
Foley, I.
Me, I.
Alamo, I.
Austin, I.
Jefferson, I.
Okay, uh moving on to select board reports.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Jefferson. So um I'd like to start by thanking the Veterans Advisory Committee and American Legion Post ninety-two for inviting the board to their Veterans Day services. Uh it was a beautiful fall morning filled with some moving words. Uh and it's always an honor for us to get out and celebrate our local veterans. Um Wednesday, November eighth, we celebrated Lucille Redominick at the seat, again, I should say, at the Senior Center. Uh Lucille had visited in April for her hundredth birthday, where she she received proclamations, uh and this time Evan presented her with the Boston Post cane citation and I was uh able to give her the the cane itself, which was pretty neat. Um Lucy, Lucille and her family are really just a joy to be around. Um and to hear about Grafton's past and, you know, because even her kids are my parents' age and um they're they're just, they're good people. Um you could you could just spend the day listening to stories. It was it was a lot of fun uh presenting her with the with the Boston Post cane. Um additionally, that same day, Wednesday, the eighth, uh Evan and I had our first meeting with the Grafton Water District. Uh as we had talked about previously, this will be a slow-moving process for a while. The next commissioner's meeting is set for December eighteenth, where they will take the appropriate municipal votes on their end to move forward uh with the treatment facility for the um Trinity Ave Well. Uh the next steps for uh the Article ninety-seven are to have both both properties surveyed that are being discussed for the parcel swap, get assessments on each property and to submit the alternative analysis report, all of which the Grafton Water District is is currently working through and will check back periodically with Evan and I. Also take a moment to wish everybody here Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving, and all the residents at home and and to wish Mr. Mead a happy upcoming birthday.
Oh. What is that?
I'm not telling you.
Oh, I'll find out. Do some Googling.
It's Sunday.
Any other select board reports?
Uh happy Thanksgiving, everybody. It's gonna be great. I went to the housing production um meeting at the um Community Barn, and I did find that uh to be incredibly insightful and helpful for me. As we, you know, have these discussions and lead through these kinds of um, you know, this this whole process, I I found that to be very helpful. And I think this Fiona does a great job and I I can't remember the lady's name. Karen, yeah, she was probably um in in my time in in trying to figure all this stuff out and kind of getting up to speed with everybody, she was probably the one that um helped me to understand it the best. She didn't know that, but she did, so kudos to her.
She really does a great job explaining it.
She does, she does.
Yeah, a wealth of experience.
Yeah.
And happy birthday in advance to Mr. Mead, coming up this Sunday, everybody.
Any other select board reports? All right, I'll just say happy upcoming birthday, Mr. Mead.
I will tell you one thing, my granddaughter just texted me, because I told her I was gonna take her to Starbucks tomorrow. She texted me and she said, make sure we go to Starbucks tomorrow. That's that's important stuff.
All right, TA report.
Uh yeah, just really brief, uh Mr. Chair, this this week, and we got a lot of stuff going on. Um we had our Capitol uh Summit this week. Um and, no, it was not this week, it was last week, sorry. Uh it went really well, uh great participation yet again from the department heads. Uh we have a very firm um very firm uh list of of items and we're doing a much better job of trying to build to that that very difficult five-year span, so we're really making some strides there. And we're, we're looking to get our budget projections out hopefully by the end of next week. And then sit down with the schools and start working through the initial budget projection. So we're looking good. I don't know if you you noticed in the. The classification hearing, but our surplus is four hundred and eight thousand. And so. I I do wanna to toot Mary's horn and my horn a little bit. That's exactly where we predicted that it would, that it would be. And so we are projecting that that is the remainder or close to the remainder of the override that the schools will. Will absorb in this budget cycle. So it'll be however we wind up breaking the budget apart. Plus that four hundred thousand dollars would be what what the schools have to top rate with. So. It's, it's, you know, it's not the most optimal, but it's, it's pretty good considering where we we were trending towards. So I'm I'm very happy with that.
Yep, okay. And it's right in line with what the original discussion. About the override was, which was, you know, four, four, five-year span for that additional levy capacity. Makes sense. Also probably means we're having a discussion about another override or some. Service level adjustments at some point. Probably next fiscal year.
I didn't say that or agree with it.
So, yep, heading, heading for twenty-six, but we'll see what the projections, you know, I wanna spend more time with th- this board. And the projections this year than we, you know, last year we, we kind of rolled them out and that was a new, new way to look at forecasting. But I wanna spend a little more time with this group. Just understanding what those, what those numbers mean and where that shows us will be in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Makes sense. Questions or comments on that? Anything else, Evan?
Uh, no, sir, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Nope, not gonna do it. I already got, I got the look when I started talking and I was like.
All right, so for the record, happy Thanksgiving and happy birthday, Ray.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
All right. Anybody want to discuss any of the?
Correspondence. Yes, please.
Mr. Jefferson, come on in.
There were a couple of correspondences on here that I'm not sure what our next steps are. And I didn't know if they warranted talking through. Only because specifically with Mr. Kaufman's, it seems like there's been extensive back and forth between. Town officials and, and him, and I don't, certainly don't mean to minimize his issue or anything like that, but I'm not sure. What action we could take beyond listening. Or if there are in fact any, any next steps to deal with that, but he did reach out and ask for, to be on an upcoming agenda. So I didn't know if that was something we should, we should discuss.
You could certainly entertain that. I don't know what your. I don't know what your authority or role would be in that case. It, it is a. A planning board issue, in my opinion. We did clarify the town's position on. The issues that Mr. Kaufman is having. I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that. You've all seen the memo that I produced and what the towns believes its responsibility is. So. Unless the board wants to meet and discuss and potentially change the town's approach to that. You could certainly do that. I would not personally recommend that you do. But that's pretty much the only action I think that you have available to you.
Similarly with. Ms. Billado in the. Dam issue. Again, it seems like.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Ms. Billado is here. So I just wanted to, if if we were gonna move into the public comment phase, I'm assuming that. I think that seems like a natural progression if that's what the chair is going to.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, can I make a comment on correspondence?
Of course.
Okay, so just to clarify, the Millstone Development, that's Venacasa, right?
I don't believe it is. No.
Okay, I thought it was.
The Millstone's on Pleasant Street, right?
I think it started, but it's not any longer, correct?
Mr. Venacasa was the original developer and that one we approved it.
Right, but I don't believe he is today. So it, I believe it started as Venacasa. But I don't, that's not who we talk, talk to and we need anything done for Millstone currently.
Okay, all right. I just was gonna say it was worth noting that if there's ongoing issues. And then. Sorry, were you gonna move into public comments?
We will shortly.
Okay, sorry. So the other thing I just wanted to bring up was the Milbury Street project. And Evan, I know you and I discussed, like you were gonna be speaking to Paul about this, but. It was brought to my attention by a couple of folks, some concerns relative to, you know, the dual sidewalks, like this isn't the first. This, this, obviously we got correspondence on it, but it's not the first I've heard of it. And I don't know if this would, you know, I want to, you know, if you're meeting with Paul or Paul's working on it, that's fine. But I know the person that brought it to me was wondering about, you know, would this be. Something that we might wanna do like a public outreach like we did, not as big as Keith Hill. I'm sorry, not Keith Hill, but George Hill. But something along those lines? Or do you feel like you guys have it under control?
So from what I'm hearing, we have it under control. You know, Paul has been meeting with residents along Milbury Street at their request to go over the plan and talk to them about it. You know, does that mean that we've hit everyone? Prob- probably not. And so, you know, if you wanted to do a little more generic of an outreach that just says, hey, anybody in this area that wants to come. Talk about it and see the plans. But I, I do know that Paul is actively meeting and discussing with folks on Milbury Street.
And by the way, maybe it would make things easier for him too, right? That he's not meeting individually if there's just something where folks can come out and get the info and. I'm just throwing it out there again. I was at the cemetery, one person got me and I was somewhere else and someone else is talking about it and then I saw the correspondence. So I just. Putting it out there, yep. I think the, the, the things that have been brought up to me, which is similar to this correspondence is, you know, the. We were doing the, the one-sided sidewalk and now we're doing the two sides and I understand that comes with state aid, et cetera. But that, tho- those seems to be the, the questions that folks are bringing to me. Not so much the original project, right? But the, the, how it's evolved.
So. Just to not let that go to kind of dead air, I, I think we could do one or two things. Either have a, like we'll call it a mini outreach meeting because it's, it's a smaller number of people than say George Hill. You know, or we could always look to do a, you know, a clarifying mailing that goes to everybody that specifically says. For further questions, here's who you're contacting. And, and just do it, and you could do it that way, kind of just the, the frequently asked questions, you know, why is it on both sides of the road? What do I do if I think that the, that the easement is drawn incorrectly? You know, those type of things that we see all the time and. You know, maybe we just do it as a, like an FAQ letter that gets mailed to all the abutters of the sidewalks and then. That's another bite at the apple for them to know where to, where to go. I would say either of those two, just top of my head that seems reasonable.
Those both sound great. Maybe whatever between you and Paul think is most efficient and or effective.
Yeah, I, I, I like the direct mailer with frequently asked questions because I think we're gonna, you know, it. The, the typical route is we'll put it on our website and you can find it, but we're gonna put this right in your mailbox. And, and this is, you know, this is the, both the questions that you might have, have that we can answer for you right here and then also. If, if you don't get satisfaction this way, here's who you contact.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I'm definitely in favor of that. When I get correspondence from the town of Grafton, it, it always sticks out to me as something that I need to read.
It's because you think it's a textbook?
Or, or the butter notice.
We can certainly do that.
Great. Any other?
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other discussion on correspondence? Okay, yeah, tho- those are the two that I wanted to hit as well. Very good. Okay, we have resignation. The first up is Kevin Brown, Jr. From the Historical Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and, and accept the resignation of Kevin Brown from the Historical Commission.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
The motion carries. All right, next up we have Bob DeToma from the Cable Oversight Committee.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Bob DeToma from the Cable Oversight Committee.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Afton, aye. Jefferson, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Next up, we have public comments. Would anybody care to? Address the board? Did you wanna come up? Come on up. Uh, you could sit down if you'd like. You're welcome to stand. It's up to you, whatever's most, most comfortable.
Okay. In the short period of time I am allowed.
So before you start.
Oh, Margaret Billado, fourteen Misko Brook Path in Grafton. Right off Stow Road. In the short period of time I'm allowed, it will be difficult to summarize the damage done to my property. You have the paper I presented to the Conservation Commission last Tuesday, November fourteenth. They listened and then they said they only deal with permits, so I would have to bring it to the Select Board, which is why I'm here. I have a few pictures to share and my lawyer had suggested I, I speak to the town representatives to see what they might offer. And I, I have met with the town administrator, but. And you saw what the, the different possibilities. Anyway, I have, I have had two different engineering companies read the material sent to the town. And I brought a copy of the article using Telegram Gazette, January twenty twenty. It seems that the engineer from Bayside Engineering that the town hired thought that from the bridge, it was a straight shot down to Silver Lake. Even though my home is clearly visible from the bridge. So, I mean, she just assumed it was gonna go. From the blue bridge, Silver Lake, no stop in between. Unfortunately, my driveway is that stop in between. The design of the bridge in the culvert showed the difference in elevation would detain less water upstream. Resulting in about forty-two million gallons heading to my driveway. Even the letter of March twenty-ninth, two thousand and three from Echo Text, Mr. Allen said, quote. There was evidence of the pond level recently being at least twelve inches higher than it is today. I know that it was because I walked through it in my driveway. Since the work began in December of twenty twenty-two, my driveway, my mel, my well, my well, which is. Contaminated by pond water increasing the bacterial content and my dam have been flooded several times. I am concerned with the integrity of the dam. One of my engineers expressed deep concern about the safety of my driveway. With repeated flooding, my driveway could become completely saturated and collapse, leaving me no access to my home. He suggested I prepare a go-bag. That's not very comforting. One suggestion was to remove my dam and turn cider mill pond into a brook. My front yard will become a dried up, probably odorous swamp like what is happening above the bridge. My property value will suffer, not to mention the suffering of the ecosystem depending on the pond. Mistakes were made and the town should be willing to help correct things. After forty-plus years on this property, it isn't the rain or the beavers. I've dealt with both for forty-plus years. It's the increase in flow of water by forty-two million gallons, according to my engineer. And as I say, I've got some pictures. This was, this was right after the bridge was finished. This is now. It's drying up.
Do you mind bringing those up?
And this is the article, I did some research and this was the article that was in. The Grafton News about Stow Road. Doing the bridge and that, that comment they had, they asked Conservation. If there would be any impact downstream and she said, oh, there shouldn't be any impact, but there's plenty of flood, flood capacity downstream. Yeah, once you get past my house. Unfortunately, my house and my, my driveway and the, where the driveway is in the fence, it drops off. So that if it gets saturated, it's gone. And so is my access to the house. And I was also told that people upstream from me like the idea of it becoming a brook instead. Because they have a lower water table. That's because the forty-two billion gallons were my yard and it's starting to work around. Right now, I, I haven't put the boards back in the dam. And it's, it's looking, well, it i- isn't even lo- going down the way it used to. Because I have a, a, there's a rock in the middle and I gauge everything by the rock. Because the turtles like the sun themselves and it's just starting to appear now. I, I mean, I don't know where we're going, but I. I mean, it's, I think it was an engineering problem because they, there's no evidence in the paperwork. According to one of my engineers that they actually. Looked, came down to my, down to my house, my property and even looked at what was going on.
Well. Not only did they do that, I believe they cleared.
Oh, no, no, that's different. That's the town men have been down. As soon as I started when I called Brian. And said, Brian, I'm gonna need a boat. And the town people came down and started trying to clear up. They were gonna, they said it's the beaver deceiver. It's too small. So they did some cleaning. But as far as the engineering before they did this, I, they were not down there.
The engineers for the Stow Road culvert.
Jake, can we ask questions or?
Yeah, uh, let's just have a discussion about it. There's a lot of information here. I, I guess. So it's nine oh seven. I, I don't want this to go on forever, so let's keep it until, if it gets to be nine thirty, then.
I'll be asleep by then.
Conversation another time. I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the difficulties that you've been having though, so I, I think it. A discussion is appropriate. So, yeah, go for it.
I just have two questions. Ms. Billard, you, you own the dam, correct? It is on your property?
It is.
One hundred percent of it. The beaver deceiver. Who installed that?
The mass mosquito group.
And is that on your property also?
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
And I got, I mean, the Conservation Commission approved, gave me the permit.
Do you have any idea, because one of the indications I think that we had was that that is too small. Do you think our, your engineers think a larger one would help at all?
They, I, when I told them about it, they did say maybe we could put in a larger pipe. But it's still not gonna help with all the water since it's not holding the water back anymore and it used to have a. There used to be a beaver dam holding the water back on the other side of the bridge. And like I say, it went from seven feet to fourteen feet. And I actually had people say to me, but it's the same amount of water. Now, I cut math. I know. It's not the same amount of water.
Personally, I find myself challenged when faced with these kinds of issues because I'm not an engineer. And it's difficult for me to evaluate as a board member without this kind of technical expertise. Where the town's culpability is and if any, and, and what an appropriate sort of next step is.
I understand because I'm not sure where the next step is. All I know is that I, I can't lose my driveway.
I, I think, Mr. Chair, maybe the next step is that we put this on as an agenda item.
I, I think Mister Chair, maybe the next step is that we put this on as an agenda item. And Ms. Billadu can bring her engineers. And try to explain how, how this takes place. My concern is, is that we have a dam and we have a beaver deceiver on someone else's property that is restricting the flow of water. And that's.
Yeah, what, but it's not really, I mean, it's, it's.
But see, but see, what I, what, what, and what I'm trying to do, Ms. Billadu, is, is, is to get a, an engineer. Who deals in dams, water flow, all of that stuff. To tell us that there's an issue and to, and what we need to do or what you need to do. Is determine that it's the town's problem. Because everything that I have seen here, it's not the town's problem. And, and I'm just being, I'm being honest with you, that's, I, I, I look at those pictures, that's awful. But I don't see it as the town's problem, so somebody else is gonna have to tell us that it's the town's problem.
That's, yeah, it's a little bit, I, I don't fully understand the, the, the engineering behind it, how that happens and I, I would agree. If someone could come in and explain it better, help us understand it. Um, I do also agree, I'm not sure where that puts us in terms of, you know, responsibility, that's a tough one, I feel terrible though.
Yeah, if I lose my driveway, that's it.
Yep, um.
Cuz it's the back end of the, of what's holding the pond.
Right.
And it's been there uh, since the eighteen fifties.
So, did your engineers uh, suggest what the town might have done different?
One thing he suggested at the time was. It was because the uh, there was a beaver dam in there and it was sort of holding back some of the water. This is before he had read all the paperwork. If they'd put something in there, even throwing in some boulders or something to deflect some of the water and. So it wasn't flowing the way it is. And then he looked at the, the paperwork and it said, the engineering, it's developed so that the, the level is. So it's not holding back as much water, it's letting more through the, through the bridge.
Right, and then it's being held by your dam, is that correct?
It's, well, it's slow, I mean, I, I, that's the only way the water's gonna get to Silver Lake.
Yep, but you're in control and ownership of, of the dam, right?
And, yeah, and I've been doing it for over forty years.
And so there's more, just.
There's a lot more water.
Talk to me like I'm five, right? You've got more water coming downhill, um, your property has the dam on it, um, that additional water is pooling up. Could you not widen the dam a little bit?
It's possible, but that would cost me a whole lot of money, cuz I mean, you went from seven to fourteen and I know what, I don't know what it cost you. But mine's only about eight feet wide. And there's really not any place for it to widen. I, they might be able to do it, I don't know.
Okay.
But I, I don't wanna think what it'll cost.
It occurs to me that um, the solution to this problem is fully within your hands. Because ultimately, regardless of what the flow is from uphill, you're damming that water at your property, which is. Ultimately, I think is what you're saying is causing the issue.
No, it's, it's creating the pond is what it's doing. And.
So, can I, can I just pull up the GIS real quick, please?
Sure.
Okay, so here's Mrs. Billadu's property, right here. This is the dam in question. If I go too close, it's gonna turn into a regular, oh, there we go. You can see it right here. Here's the beaver deceiver. That's this box on the outside. Okay. So, we travel up, oops, sorry, went too far, um, travel upstream, here is the Stow Road Culvert on the other side of S- uh, Sidermill Pond. And here is the water, um, as it sat before the removal of the dam. Um, the beaver dam, okay? So the, the problem that I've been having with this conversation and blaming this particular project. Is that if you look at where the water exists in this picture and this is uh, twenty twenty-one. So if we stop looking at that and we go back to two thousand and six. That's what it looks like with no beaver dam. Old Stow Road Culvert, no beaver dam.
No beaver deceiver.
Nope, no beaver dam. So, so what, what we're saying is, is. If you look. Sorry, let me go back, I, I know it's confusing, I've spent some, some time on this. This is the water in question that is not being held up any longer. By the dam, right? We removed the beaver dam as part of the Stow Road Culvert project. If you look at pre-dam. Pre-beaver dam. That's the natural flow in two thousand and six and you can see the level. Right? So, so our concern is, or our thought process in this matter. Is that the, the change in water that Ms. uh, Billadu is accounting for. Is because of the removal of the natural beaver impediment, not the engineering of the bridge.
Have you also been, oh, two thousand and six, you said?
Yep.
Yeah, that's probably before, a lot of the developments up above me. And uh, some of the solar panels and cutting of the trees, so a lot more water was flowing down. There's been a lot of development and I only hear this because I can talk to people and the fishermen and everything and they're saying. How the water is coming there because of the development. And now you're gonna have George Hill Road and you're gonna be fixing that and you're gonna fix the drainage. I don't know where that's going either.
Well, that should help. Cuz currently it's just country dr- country drainage, which means it's ditches, but as we all know, it's just. A lot of it's just flowing downhill, right? It's not being captured, so.
But there's been a lot of develop, a lot of trees have been cut above me.
Sure, um, that George Hill though, I mean, that'll, that'll take the water out of the equation, um, and, and move it purposefully. Um, off of the hill basically, so.
Yeah, I'm off the hill too, though.
Mister.
Yeah.
Um, only because respectfully, I just feel like we could keep going back and forth with this for the rest of the night, I think. Uh, I, I agree, uh, I think with what Mister Meade said. Um, that it would be great to, you know, if you wanna come back with your engineer and maybe we could invite Mister Canoyer as well that night. So that we can, you know, hear from, directly from experts, um, and, you know, remove some of the, some of the hearsay and opinion from it. Um, you know, deal with it at a, a future meeting.
Yeah, cuz Mister Canoyer is very familiar with the property cuz he used to hang out with the Ides. Right there.
Can talk more about that later too.
Well, how's the board feel about that uh, action?
I, I mean, I agree, I, I, you know.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, agree. Sounds like the board is uh, amenable to that, so we'll get it on a future agenda, um, and somebody will be in contact, um, yeah, to. Uh, get you here and if we could get your engineers in, um. To treat me like a five-year-old that I am, that would be great.
No, I, I don't wanna treat anybody, I was treated like a, you know, when I say, no, it's the same amount of water. Thank you.
Alright, um, any other um, public comments? Anything on Zoom?
Nope, I think um, no hands on Zoom.
Outlasted it. Very good, uh, okay, so. Uh, where are we at here?
Meeting, meeting minutes.
Mister, yeah, Mister Chair?
I will take a motion, yes, Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for October nineteenth, October twenty-seventh and October thirty-first of twenty twenty, as written.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
The motion carries, okay, great, um, I think next up we are on to executive session. Ms. Foley, do you have the uh? So this is for the purposes of uh, conducting strategy sessions uh, in preparation for negotiations with. Non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
I move, board move into executive session, I don't know if you, do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, please. I have a motion and a second, um, all those in favor, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Meade, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Okay, we will uh, return to regular session only to adjourn, um, thank you, everybody.